Thank you. Good evening. I would like to call our meeting to order. It is Thursday, May 19th, and this meeting is being broadcast live and being recorded by WCVTV. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda is public participation. Does anyone from the public have any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, we'll move on to good news. Anyone like to share good news in the district? Joyce?
I have a couple of things to share. First, I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate our colleague, Jeff Swett. You knew it was coming, who was recognized this week at the MIA as the state—tell me the exact—
Nope.
—coach of the year, tennis coach of the year, MIA tennis coach of the year for the state of Massachusetts.
Yeah.
That's a very big honor, and you should be very proud of that.
I am very proud of the kids who got me that award.
Yes.
And I am sitting next to—how many times were you coach of the year?
I don't remember.
Exactly. There were so many. So, you know, I have a distinguished colleague here.
Well, I just wanted to point that out. Also, this week I heard a story about a bus driver in our district who went above and beyond to help out a little boy who was on her bus, who dropped his cupcakes on his way to school. And that really just warmed my heart and just reminded me that we have so many people who work so hard for our kids. And she is really great. I won't say her name, just in case she doesn't want me to, but hopefully she knows that we recognize her efforts above and beyond. And then the last thing is, last night I went to an end of the year ceremony at the high school, and I'm just—for athletics, it was last night, but it's just the beginning. And it was so nice to be there in person. It was just another step forward, getting things, you know, back to—a little bit back to the way they were before. So I was really happy for those kids that they were able to have that last night. Looking forward to much more of that in all the schools. Thank you.
You took two out of my three. I didn't know about the cupcake, though.
Oh, sorry.
April?
I just wanted to just mention that, you know, from all the pictures and stuff, I saw it looked like the kids had a wonderful time at prom, and everybody looked fantastic. I love seeing everyone's personalities come out during the promenade, and hopefully that, you know, everyone had a great time because it looks like it was a well-put-on event.
Thank you. Mr. Swett?
I want to make it clear, I am not tooting my horn, but the girls' tennis team just completed this past Monday with their win over Bourne, the second consecutive undefeated SCC championship. So—
Wow.
—anybody who knows, I have an extraordinary group of young women.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number four, the strategic plan logo winner. Dr. Shwan?
Scott, can you come up here? Just have a seat right there, because I might ask you a question. Just giving you a heads-up on that. No, no. Oh, I need my glasses.
Maybe you should help her read it.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so, our new strategic plan, WPS 2026, gives us all a roadmap toward the future. Student voice is extremely important to our district, and in order to make this document whole, we needed students involved. First, we asked students to vote for a motto. Our Wareham High School Student Council was instrumental in creating this opportunity. The vote incorporated "Our future begins here." We also needed a logo. I asked the art teachers if they could design a lesson about creating logos and talk about our plan. Thank you to Andrea Erickson and Amanda Sharples for taking this on. They proposed the lesson to our students, and they submitted 22 logos. I placed those logos on a survey and met again with the Wareham High School Student Council. I asked them to design a survey that considers responses from all students, grade K through 12, and I asked for two criteria: one, no names on any of the images, and two, all students need to participate in the vote. The student council decided to vote on the top six images. Then they asked the high school students to choose their favorite. From there, four images were chosen. They were then sent those to the middle school, and then the top two images were chosen. From there, the two were sent over to the elementary school, and the image created by Scott was chosen after all of that. So, WPS 2026 logo will be part of the plan for the next four years. Thank you to the teachers, the principals, the student council, all of the students that voted, and to Scott and his family. Thank you for coming. He has published on this document, and this logo will support our vision and remind us that our future begins here, and we will become the best versions of ourselves. So, congratulations, and thank you so much for coming. The image was supposed to be here. You'll probably get it at school because your art teachers aren't feeling so well, so. And I will project it on here so you can see it. It's quite elegant, and it really means a lot, and Scott's name is right in the image, so you will have credit for that forever. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Really appreciate it.
And you will get your gift tomorrow. I apologize it's not here tonight. All right?
Okay.
Awesome. Do you have any questions for Scott?
Can we see it?
Yes, I'll have to put it in. Oh, yeah, thank you. That's perfect. I'll just hand it around.
Scott, congratulations. Thank you for taking the time to do that. That's really very cool. Thank you.
Oh, that's beautiful. Good job.
Thank you.
You have a good eye. Do you like—did you like designing?
It's the image that's on the invitation.
Yes.
Oh!
I put the image on the invitation, so you have—
Oh, it is elegant.
Elegant? I notice. Did you want to ask many questions?
How long did that take you to do?
Uh...it took me about two to three days to make.
Okay. Do you do a lot of that kind of stuff on your own, or is this something new for you?
Not really. It's new to me.
Nice.
Jeff? So, there's no Latin in it.
No.
Which is a good thing, because no one understands Latin.
I don't understand Latin either.
Exactly. That's just really old, hundred-year-old places that have Latin. So, what was the inspiration for it?
I don't know. I just really kind of like thought of an idea in my head, and I thought, "Very good." So I just kind of attempted my best to make it what I could on Chromebook.
So, how close is this to what your original idea was? I mean, really, did it just sort of go from here to paper?
No. It was similar to the idea, but different colors and like a slightly different design. So, I just kind of thought what looked best and just—
And finally, I know you're awfully young to ask this question, but do you have specific aspirations for how you would like to—what you would like to pursue when you finish, although you never really finish your education?
Uh, I've been actually thinking becoming some type of engineer, like an aerospace engineer, maybe.
It looks like you have multiple talents, so whatever you choose, I suspect you'll be successful. And thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
I just—oh, sorry. Just a quick comment. I had a—my previous job, I was a marketing director, and I would have loved to have had someone with your eye on my team. So, great job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just wanted to say, looking back and seeing your mom back there, I realized I'm kind of your uncle. I'm married to her foster sister. So, if you actually—we have a studio, an art studio, down in the basement of our house, so if you'd like to come over and get to know your cousin Jacob better, who also likes to draw and do graphic design—I haven't seen you since you were a baby. I'm blown away seeing you all grown up. So, I saw your mom, and I went, "Amy, oh, wow." So, if you want to come by and ever do more with your artwork, we've definitely got some space for you. And I know your Auntie Janelle would love to have you. And just so you know, well, just let me ask, how well did you feel the art supplies and art classes that you had school helped you with doing this, even though it was a school project? Did you feel well-supported, well-equipped to do it all?
Yes, I did.
Good. That's what we like to hear.
It's a small world. Thank you again very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Joyce.
That's all right. I don't—I won't ask you any questions. I just want to say thank you for coming tonight, so we could recognize you. You did a really great job. And thanks to your family for coming, too.
Thank you.
Awesome.
So, we'll move from one recognition to another now, and I'll ask Dr. Shaver Hood to lead us in our school nurse staff recognition.
Thank you. I would like to invite the principals and our school nurses to join us at the table, please. And our high school principal and school nurse were not able to join us tonight. The last two years have been challenging, to say the least. And while administrators think that it's been difficult for us, I cannot even begin to tell you how difficult it has been for our school nurses. But the job that they have done, the dedication, the endless hours that they have put into helping us make everything work, I can't even begin to describe my gratitude and my thanks. There's been—there were several nights that I know I was sending emails, probably at nine or 10 o'clock, and I received answers. So, thank you. I always knew if there was a situation and I called, I was in good hands. And I knew that the answers I received were the right answers. So, that means so much to me. That means so much to my fellow administrators, and, most important, to our students. So, thank you. And now I turn it over to—we'll start with Tracy.
All right. Thank you. So, I have a little bit to say about Sue Akins. Sue Akins has been our backbone during COVID. She has gone above and beyond the scope of her position as a school nurse. She has been the nurse point person for the district and collaborated with all of the stakeholders to ensure the safety of the students and staff. Families, administration, and staff rely on her all the time, still, her guidance, her advice, her support in navigating the pandemic. All hours of the night and day, weekends, too, Sue has been available for medical support, and it continues to this day. I personally could not have performed my job without her the last couple of years. I am completely dependent upon her support and advice for the unprecedented number of COVID-related cases we have been involved in at the middle school this school year. She has supported staff and students and families. Sue is an exemplary nurse and staff member that has prioritized keeping everyone safe. Not many people can understand the severe pressure and responsibility that is. We did spend some days in tears in my office because of the pressure of it all, but we got through it. We're still kind of reliving it the last few weeks, but we all do value her knowledge, professionalism, and dedication to our families, students, and staff. Thank you certainly isn't enough.
Thank you, Tracy.
And I have the pleasure of having Danielle Ambrose and Sheila Braley at Wareham Elementary School. They are my rocks, so that's why they're between me right now. Literally, every day, I visit the nurse's office four or five times, and so do about 600 other students. Not because necessarily of the boo-boos and everything else, but because they love our school nurses. They don't just act as nurses putting on Band-Aids, treating temperatures, calling parents, but they are support systems for our students. They are, "What do you need? How can I help you?" And they're my support system as well. This is the first year I am lucky enough to work with Danielle. Right away, we had a very strong connection, and I am so blessed to have her working with our school every single day, and her love for the children. Again, just as Ms. Cote says, goes above and beyond being a school nurse. She is also a teacher, and she works with every student every day, no matter who comes in, with love, grace, and care. She's also newly engaged. Nurse Braley—I have had the pleasure of working with Nurse Braley during my tenure as school principal. She has acted not only as the nurse, a teacher, a friend, my mother, because at times even she smiles, but she'll say, "Bethany, take care of yourself," and she's always watching out for not only the students, but the staff. In COVID, we, as Ms. Cote said, middle of the night—it always happened Sunday at 9:00 p.m., where I would have a list of students, and Nurse Braley would be there, calling families, and just in a very comforting way expressed to them that they were unable to go to school for a certain amount of time because they were quarantined. And every family was, "We understand. We understand," so graciously, because it was delivered in such graciousness. And that is Nurse Braley. And she also became a very quick mathematician, because not only that, these nurses had to figure out and count, okay, quarantine, one, two, three, four, how many days, and the days kept changing every other month.
That's right. And the policies changed.
As the policies changed. So then we became law keepers as well, to understand the different policies that came about. And every wave that came, the resilience built. And we are so, so grateful to have these nurses at our table and serving our district every day. So, I know we are very grateful. Thank you, Danielle.
I love you, Bethany.
I love you, too.
And I have this from Scott. "The nurse position has never been more important than when the pandemic began. Beyond all of the traditional responsibilities of a high school nurse, more has been added. Mary Ann has been the point person for all COVID questions, concerns, and protocols. We felt it was important enough to have everything go through one person, and she has been that person. This has allowed us to maintain a very safe building, and we have a consistent response to all COVID issues. He could not have handled it without Mary Ann by his side." So, thank you to Mary Ann, who couldn't be here tonight, but again, thank you. Now, if we could have our nurses move over to by the screen, that would be spectacular. It looks kind of scary, isn't it? Yes, yes. So, we—you know, we just want you to know how much we appreciate what you've done, and our words aren't—it's just not enough. So, we thought you might like flowers. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
This is actually also in honor of the championship tennis season.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. You're welcome. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Dr. Shaver Hood, for inviting them and giving us this opportunity to recognize all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Ooh, now, if you'd like to sit here, I'm sure they have questions.
What this itch?
Do you have questions? No, all right?
Like, let us leave.
Look, really.
No, they really do. Excuse me when I tell you. They really do.
I don't have a question, but we know who does, but I will— But I would just like to say, thank you for adhering to all the policies that the state has thrown at you, and changing policies, I know, at times. Thank you for making it safe for our students and their families. And thank you for contributing to the culture of the buildings, because you really do. By the way you treat kids, that does help the culture of the building and makes teaching and learning more effective. So, really, thank you very much. Much appreciated.
If I could add to that, I just want to say, especially with you and Sue Akins, I know we've—you know, you've helped me out with turkeys for Thanksgiving and stuff like that. You've always called me whenever there was an issue with my son, who's a special needs student. And, you know, my mother was a nurse, a pediatric nurse, for 40 years, so I always have a, you know, soft spot in my heart for nurses. So, thank you all very much for what you do. We really appreciate it. The school couldn't do it without you.
April?
I'm just going to echo what everyone else is saying. You guys not only have to deal with the kids that just want to get out of class and quickly send them back, but you have had to deal with—I couldn't even imagine what you've had to deal with. You have a pandemic on top of everyday challenges with kids with medications that were required, or changes of clothes, or a safe space that they need to just get away for a few minutes, anxiety, asthma. You guys have handled everything, and it's amazing that we have such a caring and amazing and talented team of nurses that work in our district to serve our kids. So, thank you. There's four of you, but you do the work of a hundred, so I don't know how you do it. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
I—I—I have nothing to add, Kevin, and they did such a good job. Just thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All eyes on—
So, I spent most of my career working with nurses and have an extraordinary appreciation for how hard you work. So, thank you, thank you. The question I have actually is a request that you be as candid as possible now, and tell us how we, as a school committee, did during this pandemic.
And we did just give you flowers.
They don't know how we did. They were too busy doing their own job.
In other words, if we have a next one, and everybody's saying there will be another one, what should we do differently, or did we do okay?
I—I think we did a great job. I really do. We had a lot of support. As Dr. Shaver Hood said, she would call us, but we could also call her, and she would respond. I will say, I've been doing this nursing job for 27 years, and I'm glad that I'm not like my friend Danielle, who just has come in, because I don't know if I would really stay at the job with what we have had to do for the last two years. It's been very trying, but we've stuck together as a team, and we've leaned on each other. But we've had support from administration and from the school committee that I think we did a great job.
Thank you.
What more would you like to see from us?
What's that?
What more would you like to see from us? How—what more can we do for you?
I real—I—
All right, we aced you guys.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything—
No.
—more, as long as you have the support. I think if everyone works together, then things will work out fine.
Okay, thank you.
I—I will say that, you know, I appreciate—like, I went with Mrs. Siemens at first because I was mine it, and then I went to the new school with Bethany. And I will say, you know, taught—when I was with Joan and we had our cases at mine it, 10 o'clock at night, we would be talking together. And when I shifted to the new school, it was the same way. Anytime we needed anything, Bethany comes in every single day to check on us, to see if we're okay. And we really appreciate that, because we need the support, too, just like everybody else.
April?
I did just want to note that Bethany referred to 9:00 p.m. as the middle of the night. So, I love that 10 o'clock is what you're actually saying, so that must have been like almost dawn for you.
So, once again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have someone's glasses.
Thank you very much.
Is it probably my second ear? Or your second?
Because you leave them?
I can't see you leaving them.
I know. I have the same issue.
Thank you. At least I didn't have my top of my head these days.
You have two on.
Our next policy is our school choice—
I just need one more recognition.
Sure.
Last week, when we did our staff retiring, inadvertently, we left one person out, which we deeply apologize for, Patty Bazanet, who left us in October of this year. And so, we invited her. She declined, but I bet she's watching. So, hi, Patty. And Bethany would just like to say a few words.
I hope Patty is watching. She was watching last week, too. I—what do I say about Patty Bazanet? I've known Patty since 2000, since I began as a substitute. She has been a paraprofessional since 1997 in our school district, but before 1997, she was a school bus driver here in our district. She's a graduate of Wareham High School. All three of her children came through Wareham High School. She was an amazing paraprofessional, very dedicated professional, especially in mathematics. She was responsible for really setting the bar when it comes to automaticity in mathematics. There is a program called Extra Math, which is a secondary program that we use just to practice our math facts. But what Patty did at Deacon School was she took that responsibility, rewarded students, gave them pencils, created the bulletin boards, personalized it, and made the announcements for me every day. And she's part of the reason why our math scores and our children really went up at Deacon's during a time. Not only that, but back in the heyday, in the early 2000s, Patty and I had a competition of who had the best laugh. I don't know if you know that about me, but I have a pretty good laugh. But Patty beat me out, according to the administration team at the time at Deacon's. So, Patty and I share that quality. She has a love for life that is really remarkable. She will be sorely missed. She's also, on a side note, I get to be with her still, because she's still a member of the school council. And she has been a member, much like Ms. Bakayaki, for a very long time, decades of school council work. And she's still a member of school council today. So, I still—she's still an active member of our school community, who cares deeply for Wareham Public Schools. And she is sorely missed, and I keep asking her to come back. So, if you're watching, Patty, we're waiting. And we appreciate her dedication, her enthusiasm, her love for children, love for our staff and our community, and we thank you for your service. You're welcome. Thank you, Bethany.
I would just add that Patty and I did graduate together from Wareham High School, and it's no surprise she was a successful student then, and it's no surprise that the students benefited from her presence over the years. So, thanks, Patty. All right, we now move on to school choice policy. We have—actually, it's on our agenda twice tonight. This first one, Dr. Shaver Hood, if you want to just address, this is the yearly approval, correct?
This is—this one is your policy.
Oh, our policy, okay.
Yeah.
So, if we'll take—we had discussed this at our last meeting, the school choice policy filed Jeff ABB, and we had talked about a couple of different potential changes to it. Since we last met, I believe that we added October 15th as a deadline. That came at the request of the high school principal, and the elementary and middle school principals were fine with that request. But I would also recommend that we add one other phrase under bullet number seven, where it says, "School choice students will not be accepted or enrolled after April 15th, with the exception of the past program."
October 15?
What's that? Excuse me, October 15th, "with the exception of the past program." That's a bit of a different dynamic to that. And so, with that change, I would be looking for a motion to accept this as policy.
Make a motion to accept as amended.
Second.
Would we like to discuss this?
I just want to thank the chair, not only for the amendment, but I believe the word "state" was added to the funding section, which was—
You're correct.
—somewhere up in number five.
Yes, number five.
And that—that phrase, which in my mind created a two-tiered system of students, was deleted. was deleted. So, I applaud all three changes, and I'm certainly prepared to support it.
Yes, I just want to say thank you to the chair for doing the work to put this together.
No problem. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? 5-0-0. Thank you. And next, we have the district handbook. Dr. Shaverhood, you want, you want to do this, or do you want...
Yeah, I can go through it real quickly if you... You have a list of changes for the district handbook. On page 41, the closing of the school building policy, the amended date to May 12th, and then the wardings for alternative location. And then on page 79, administrative contacts updated, and there was one other one besides the addition of the new, of the director of finance, name and email, also the super, the new superintendent. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. And if not, then I would be asking for approval.
Any questions? All right, do we have a motion to approve? Jeff, first.
Art, I, unfortunately, I am derelict in not being able to reference a specific place, but is, does the district handbook have a reference to dress code?
I believe those...
It does.
I thought they were more buildings. I think it's vague and more buildings.
It's in, it's in the district handbook. It was great reading last night. Dress code, it mentions that for students. It also mentions a business casual for staff as well.
I, I had a conversation with, this is one of those subjects I'll probably regret ever bringing up, but the, the dress code during student activities as compared to during school itself. Is there a difference between the two?
No, because if there is a school activity, you're governed under the school rules.
Okay, so, if, if a sports team chose to go shirtless during an activity, and I'm talking obviously about boys, would that fit into the appropriate dress code?
Yes, because on page 10, number C, it says, "Midriff, cleavage, bare backs, and undergarments are not to be exposed." So, bare backs.
Okay, so, the bottom line is that during sports activities, backs should be covered.
That's true.
Okay, thank you. Second question I have would be, and I admit to having both a bias because of my advanced age, and also because I'm a tennis official, but foul language, just so people know, foul language is penalized in a tennis match. You cannot use the F-word, for example, in a tennis match without losing a point, where there is an official. What is the position of the school principals when it comes to foul language?
Well, we have two right here.
And while you're coming up, and I appreciate the fact that you're here, I was driving a bus, and a sports team, not mine, I think they know how old I am, and my girls just decide to be really good, because they are really good. And a sports team was playing music on a speaker, which is fine. I don't like the music, but I recognize how old I am, and classical music doesn't, isn't exactly what I expect a team to be playing. But it was rap, and the F-word was throughout this music, and to the credit of the coach involved, when I commented on it, it immediately stopped. But he also said something that got me thinking, which was, he commented to his team, "Know your audience." And that got me thinking, what he's really saying is, the driver is really old, and you should be more respectful of, of his age, and realize that he doesn't want to hear that language. So, part of me thought, okay, maybe, maybe I'm just old, and it's okay, except on the tennis courts. But it also occurred to me, maybe it's not okay. So, I'd love to hear your thoughts, and believe me, I can take it. If I'm just old, and I should get used to it, that's okay.
I can begin. It's interesting, because I have so many grades now, and so, young children, the discipline is much different than older children. Because younger children are more of a parrot. They hear it from others, but they may not know the intention. So, it's a learning opportunity about appropriate words and how we use them. Older children, I think that, you know, they use it more for socialization purposes and fitting in and different. But they, most of them, if not all of them, know what the words mean and are using them as adjectives. And there's another learning opportunity, although in my mind, it's more of a disciplinary action in regards to respect. And we use it every, I say kind words and actions. We have respect, responsibility, and safety. And our respectful, what we say every single day, is I use kind words and actions. So, our job at our school is to use kind words, and if you don't, then it's an opportunity for us to make sure that we speak to that.
My kids know the difference. It's not allowed, and it's especially not allowed if you're directing at an adult. That will be a suspension. So, we hold high expectations. It's not allowed. And we just had a tune-up assembly, and we went over a few words that we've been hearing that just aren't allowed, even when we're speaking to our friends and trying to do it quietly, it's just not allowed, so...
And a good example of that, when we speak to that, Mr. Swett, as I, and I say this a lot, I said, "I'm not allowed to use the word in school, and neither are you." And that's as simple as that. As adults, we do not use the words. We would be disciplined. I'd be disciplined. They should be disciplined if they know better. And that's...
Thank you.
You've never had the luxury of listening to the basketball team's pre-game warm-up tape and having to edit it before every single game. So, you just have to, you do have to know your audience.
What a football team.
Yep. I will, I will tell you a quick story, and that is, I literally pulled over the bus once for the tennis team, quite a few years ago, when I heard the F-word. And, and I think they remember that, and they keep passing it on, because it's never happened again.
Yep, good thing.
Are you suggesting...
I think to Bethany's point, the little ones are parrots. They're hearing it, they don't know what it means, they just want to say it because they heard someone else say it. I think in Tracy's school, I think middle school, especially from what I remember being a sub, that's the boundary testing age. You're seeing what you can get away with, you're seeing if you can use it correctly. And then I think, once they get to the high school, they've started using it so much with their friends that they lose their ability to self-censor. I'm living that life right now. Every teacher in the high school could probably tell you, "My son sounds like a sailor." And I'm constantly repeating, "Language, respect." And I think it gets to that point where, when they're, you know, a certain age, they're like, "Well, I'm almost an adult, I can do what I want." So, it gets to be, I think, a little bit tricky as they near the upper high school age to police it. But I, I do think that the school does a good job when they're at sporting events, trying to remind them that they will get, like, it's the same thing with the track team. If they get heard cursing, like, if they fall out or they foul, they automatically foul them if they hear them say a bad word. So, I think some of the officials do the best that they can.
That's interesting. They automatically foul if they use abusive language.
Yeah, if they curse in the, on, if certain officials, but yeah. So, I think it's a standard that they try, but I don't know that it's that easy all the time.
I don't know.
That's close to tennis. That's interesting. I didn't know that.
Well, I also know from, I don't know if this has changed over the years, but when I played football for Wareham High, if a referee heard you swearing, he could throw a flag for it. And I'm pretty sure in basketball, I've seen technical fouls be given to players for using bad language on the court. I mean, even if it's muttered under the breath for a bad call or a missed call or anything like that. I mean, I, I think that it's something that the officials in each sport do their best to regulate. I mean, tennis, it might be a little bit easier, but with, you know, with football, with them running all over the field, they're farther away. But I'm sure every sport tries at least to keep language clean.
They do, they do.
The interesting thing is, tennis doesn't have officials.
All right, I'm going to focus us back to number seven, though, the district handbook right now, real quick. Good digression, and a useful one, I think, because it's an important issue for culture of buildings and schools. For the district handbook, vote for the handbook with the additional changes that were made. Do I have a motion? Do I already have a motion? Some move, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? 5-0-0. Thank you. We have the report of the superintendent next.
Thank you. I have two gifts. The first one you do not have listed. It's $2.10. It's from Opile Prints. It's for Wareham High School. It's from sale of apparel. The second one would be the $300 mini grant to Aisling Wine Drop's classroom for adding a small greenhouse. It's from the Massachusetts Agricultural in the Classroom. So, I'd ask the committee to please approve those two gifts.
Some moved.
Second, I'll just say that this is the, these are the students who came to our meeting and presented about their garden project out in the back of the school. Yeah, so that's great.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? 5-0-0.
Next, to approve payroll and the bill warrants, which the amounts are listed in your newsletter.
Some moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 5-0-0.
I would ask that the school committee approve the Wareham Public School District as being a school choice district for the school year 22-23.
Some moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
5-0-0, thank you.
Thank you. And finally, just to adjust a little wording in the student activities vote account, and it's under banned. And so, if we could extend it to ban student activities account, and then we would have the objective to learn to play an instrument, vocal instruction, or music performance. And the reason why we're asking for this is, when there was money collected, it needs to match what's listed in the student activities, and we had a little difficulty depositing some money, because the town accountant did not believe that it matched what we had listed, so we're making that adjustment, so we don't have any difficulties in the future.
So, the money that was in there is just going to transfer over, just with a different name?
Yes.
Some moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? 5-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, under the report of the school committee, I did want to add just one quick agenda item. Policy assignments in committees, subcommittees. We had sent an email out to folks, but just to make it transparent, for policy review, April would be the chair, Brennan would serve on that committee. For budget, right now, it's Jeff and myself, and then the next superintendent will determine who he wants on his advisory committee. Cape Cod Collaborative, Joyce volunteered to re-up for another year.
Only because I think it's important to do two years at a time. You spend a year learning.
Mm-hmm.
Jeff, you did it, I know, so would you, wouldn't you agree?
Yeah, I think it's initially quite confusing about what they're doing, despite the fact that I think Paul Hilton does an excellent job.
He does, he does.
But yes, I would agree with you. And thank you for doing it.
Yes, thank you. Onset Scholarship, April and Brennan, and superintendent evaluation, Joyce and Jeff. Since we last met, the selectmen, I think, are also forming a subcommittee, an audit subcommittee in the town with the town administrator, and there might be the possibility of a school committee liaison being asked to be a liaison for that.
There was, that, that existed in the past.
Yeah, I've been on it.
Yes, and it had, the committee itself kind of dissolved, but now they're bringing it back.
Okay, so, do I...
I'd be interested in that.
Be interested?
Yes, please.
Well, I think you, congratulations. You're the liaison to the audit committee.
Good experience.
Yeah, please try that.
All right. And then, at our next meeting, I am going to bring up the possibility of forming another subcommittee on public relations, or to discuss that at that meeting.
If that's possible.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that then at the next meeting, what it might entail, and how it should best be composed. And then, just quickly, in dealing with cafeteria, in terms of contracts or grievances, would be April and Joyce, bus drivers, myself and Brennan, custodians, April and myself, unit A teachers, Jeff and Brennan, unit B administrators, Jeff and Joyce, unit C parents, Joyce and April, unit D clerical, myself and Brennan. So, thanks in advance for all your hard work coming up on all those committees and subcommittees. That's kind of the silent work behind the scenes that people don't know we all have to do, but thank you, it's very important. All right, next up is the school committee meeting schedule, 2022-2023, an amendment, perhaps. I'd like to have a discussion first, since it is on the agenda. We had a list of meetings that we approved the dates already for these meetings going forward. What I was, wanted the committee to consider potentially would be perhaps an amendment to change the time. Done a little homework on what areas school committees have for meeting times, and it ranges anywhere from 5:30, 6:00, 6:30, and 7:00, from what I can tell. The majority falling in the 6:30 range. So, I don't know how people feel about that, but this is a chance for a discussion on meeting time, maybe moving it up. I would say I asked Dr. Shaverhood to talk to the administrators regarding that potential change, and maybe you could share their thoughts as well.
They were quite excited about moving it up. Many of them stay, and so, from after school until 7:00 sometimes is a very long time. So, anything sooner, they would be very grateful for.
Thank you.
My only concern, not necessarily even a concern, but I know that, like, there have been some Thursday meetings where there's been like a sporting event, and then Jeff as a coach wouldn't be able to get there for those times, or if there are parents or teachers that have students that play in a sport, or have an activity or a performance that happens to be on a Thursday, if they're after school or they run until this time, they might not be able to make it here in time to either see what they want, to be voted on, or to be able to present. I do understand that 7:00 is, is late, and I know that our teachers and administrators work a very long day. They work when they go home as well as when they're in the building. But I do think that we have two meetings a month, so I don't necessarily think that two, you know, every other weekend, or every two weeks or what have you, isn't a big deal. I just worry certain times of the year, especially like the spring, you have a lot of senior events, and I would just hate to see that interfere with anything that we would need to do should something important come up.
Any other discussion?
April said it well.
I mean, I work nights, but honestly, again, it's, it's two nights a month. It's worth me getting out a little bit early for, so, considering how many other people are involved, if that makes things easier for everybody, who doesn't want to get home a little bit earlier.
Yeah, I, I would say I, when you, you know, I saw that you were proposing this, I definitely would be in favor. I understand what, what April is saying, but there's, you're never going to have a time that's going to work for everyone. You know, there's later times, someone could say, "Well, I would want it to come, but my, I have small children, and I couldn't come out later, but I could have come earlier." It's just, it's like everything in life, there's just never a time that's going to be convenient for every single person. I don't know, I've never, I've never heard of anyone who's tried to come, but, you know, couldn't come because of the time. I, I just think if it's important, people will, you know, they'll come. But I understand, I understand your perspective, yeah.
The only thing I would add is, I think April said it well. On the other hand, I would feel guilty if the vast majority of people would benefit from, say, a 6:00 time, and just because I'm going to be late every once in a while, does not mean the majority of the people who would benefit from it shouldn't, we shouldn't do it. So, you know, it's, it's, it's that simple. My first priority during the tennis season is obviously going to be the kids, and if I'm late, so be it.
I mean, we have had occasion recently where the meetings have been earlier, and it seems to have worked okay. Well, I know Jeff, you were coming in on two wheels sometimes, but, yeah.
It's, yeah.
I have one other question about the time. So, on occasion, when we do have, like, an executive session beforehand, that would then bump everything else into not a whole hour earlier as well, so I just want...
We'd probably do the executive session on the tail end, if we were to adopt. That's what most other committees do that I researched, that if they have an earliest that date, they generally do the executive session afterwards. they generally do the executive session afterwards.
Well, again, and that I understand, but again, when we're talking about like, say, hours and if it's a contract, if it's like something that's a negotiation, now we're paying our attorney to be here after hours, late night, however that is if they're involved in whatever, the, a lot of times the executive session revolves around something contract related or legal related. So I just want to make sure that if it's after the fact, if we have a meeting that goes say long, which we know that they do from time to time, that if we're meeting from 6:30 to 8:30 and then we're doing from like 8:45 on to however long an executive session needs to be, that whatever legal person or counsel that would be available during those, that timeframe, I would want to double check with them that they would be willing to do that, that late if that was what we're changing it to. So even if we table it to discuss or devote at our next meeting, after we discuss it with, like with our legal counsel to make sure that should something come up and we do it afterwards, that they'd be able to be present.
Or could we just not also agree that maybe we could do it early if we had to? Or not, I don't know, I mean-
If it involved legal counsel.
If it involved legal counsel. Yeah, because we don't want to do anything that's going to extend-
Right, I just want to make sure every single, before we change anything, that every I is dotted and every T is crossed and every possible avenue is checked beforehand, because I would hate for us to change it and then be like, "Oh, I didn't think of that" and have it not work.
Jeff?
Well, I think, I think the good news is that we can establish a general time and then as circumstances warrant, we can change it. I like the idea of having executive sessions later, but on the other hand, I think April's point is well taken. So depending on the circumstances, you know, maybe we'll change it to before instead of, instead of after, just as there might be an occasion where six o'clock is, seven o'clock is better than six o'clock, but in general, we'll try and do it at six. So I think you have that flexibility as chair to take feedback and make a decision.
Well, I like the idea of the flexibility, if we came up with a general time and then took in the concerns that April's talking about to make sure that it doesn't hamstring us, that we have the ability to be flexible from that, that's what I would recommend at this point.
I think that's fine.
Just being someone new so I can, see if I understand this, I know that we're trying to, you know, nail down a general time for the meeting as far as the executive, executive sessions, which is what you're concerned about, those can be before, after, we can adjust those as needed, like he said, right?
Yes.
Let's do that.
So is there a motion?
So motioned.
To move the committee meeting to what time?
Exactly, that's-
I don't know, we actually think we need a vote. I think as chair, you can establish the time and, and if you're looking for consensus, you know, I'm perfectly willing to, to support your decision to make it earlier.
I'm fine with that if we have a consensus though. Do we have a consensus?
To move it to 6:30?
Six, 6:30, what are we talking about?
Knowing that you have the, the ability to make a change if it's needed.
Okay.
I can, that's about 6:30, what's-
Yeah.
Is that the general consensus, 6:30?
Works for me.
I could have, I could have lived with six, but 6:30 is a little better than six, but-
I can live with six too, is, you know, knowing, knowing that it's, it's, you're able to make changes.
You have been, you have been very circumspect in not expressing your own feelings about what it should be.
Correct, I wanted to give everyone else a chance before I gave my opinion.
Tell us how you feel.
I value how you feel.
I think six is doable, but again, if we don't have consensus, I'm not going to force six on the committee. So I would say we just need to decide between six or 6:30 right now as a group.
As, as long as we can come to you and say, you know, is there any chance of making it 6:30 or 7 on a given meeting, I'm perfectly fine with six.
I think 6:30 will give those people that have an opportunity that might work till 5 to actually be able to eat, catch their breath, like change gears and then get to a meeting for like anyone who, like family or whatever, but if that, if anyone's fine with six, I already changed my intent, my work schedule for Thursdays to be out early to get to meetings, so, and to be able to read, reread documents to make sure I'm prepared. So I think I could make it work, but I just don't know, just, if we start at six, people haven't eaten, it could get hangry and cranky and, I know I get hangry and cranky, so I might just start bringing snacks, like I, it might be what happens.
So I hear okay with six. To my left, I hear sort of okay, but we prefer 6:30. Joyce?
I'm okay with six.
Brennan?
Six, 6:30, either one works for me.
Well then, as chair, I'm going to say, let's start with six and if it seems like it's going to be a problem, we can change it to go to 6:30 next, but it will start with the 6 o'clock starts next year. Okay?
Done.
All right. Well, that was sort of easy. All right, next, last on our report for the school committee is the superintendent contract. We all should have received that contract this week and-
I'll move approval. And thanks to the chair for accommodating the one concern I had, or whoever negotiated it.
No problem. All right, we have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you. Any other business? Seeing none.
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have, I do, just, just one small thing I forgot to mention under good news, sorry. So we heard recently about a dedication, a field dedication for the softball field and that is going to happen Monday at 5:45 for Lance Howlett at the softball field.
Thank you. April?
I believe the ribbon cutting for the elementary school is June 11th, so that's a, a nice event to be reminded that we're finally, is, is the public going to be involved in that? That would be great, Bethany, thank you.
You're welcome.
I drove by the beautiful sign with the reminder on it on my way home from work today, so it was like fresh in my mind.
I had the opportunity to meet with Ms. Frugan on, on Monday to discuss and finalize some details for our ribbon cutting for Wareham Elementary School. It will be taking place on June 11th from 11 a.m. to 2 p.m., open to the public. We're very, very excited. There is going to be tours and some children events. We're going to have a food truck, Perry's Ice Cream, Tatcha Truck, thanks to Mark's Auto. We are going to have the, also the fire department's going to be there, police, it's going to be a wonderful community event beginning at 11 a.m. I think an official invitation will be coming out by Ms. Frugan soon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
April and Joyce, thank you for those additions, no, they were both important, thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.